Meeting and join for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to our November. We're just talking about how we can't believe next week is Thanksgiving. All right, let's move right to our recognition if we have any for this evening.
Nothing this month, but next month.
Okay, all right, go on. Wait until faded breath, right? Not what we're gonna celebrate then. About business comments and communication, nothing there. All right. Move to CTA, PTA, Learning Garden and Booster Club updates. I know there was an agenda and some things attached there, so.
Yeah, um, communication's been starting to be sent out to you all, right? Some of the PTA communication, is that right?
I think I get it, yeah.
You get it?
I'm a CTA member as well.
Yeah.
And I'm adding what you send to the board notes unless it's something that's already passed and it's like signup or.
No, that makes sense.
There should be, it should be linked in there under content.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, I thought it. Yes, by the way, you make it sound like something additional, so.
I am behind on some of the communication. PTA in general has been super active and busy the last two, three weeks, something like that. So I owe even our members a complete overhaul update, I feel like. So, um, I'll go quickly through a lot, the several things that we've been doing. Uh, last week we served conference or meals to the teachers during conferences at primary and elementary and we ended up being able to serve them for two days. I think because of the scheduling this year and how it worked out, a lot of teachers were so packed that they didn't get a chance to go down and get food. So, um, both schools asked if we could leave it up the next day and we were able to do that. So, um, I think that that went over really, really well. Uh, we also had bingo since last month when I provided an update. That was our first annual bingo that we've done. Super, super successful. Uh, right now, we are still waiting on a couple of checks, but we are just over $6,000 in profit on bingo. After all of our expenses and everything. So, super successful. We are planning on doing that again next year. So, spread the word. Hopefully next year it's even bigger. We, um, I think we had three tables that didn't end up um, full. So, out of everything that we set up, I think we had 70 people or so. So, great event. Yeah, it was a lot of fun. Um, Spiritware, we actually just opened Spiritware Spirit Gear Store back up and I have some flyers to all circulate that. We had a lot of requests for people, for people that either missed it the first time earlier this fall, um, or they wanted it for Christmas gifts, which, great idea. So, we opened that back up and we have added several items to that store as well. So, like I said, I'll pass around that flyer, um, and there's QR code on there if you all want to order anything. Next month, we are going to be doing a holiday shop for primary and elementary kiddos. So, each kiddo at the school can come and shop at the store to get a gift for one member in their household. I believe it's one is what we settled on. Um, sibling, parent, grandparent, guardian, whatever it is, at no cost to them. Uh, what we are looking for in that is donations. So, items that are approximately a $5 value. Um, socks, um, hats, you name it, anything, candles, you know, just something. I think some of the kids have brought home um, ornaments is one of the things, just red ball ornaments. But, they get to pick it out. We partner with Beta Club. They're gonna come in and help us run it and also gift wrap all the presents. So, each kid will have something to take home uh, free of charge and we've organized it with both of those schools. So, uh, if you have anything to donate or donate monetarily, we are looking for donations. Next month, we will also have um, holiday gifts for primary and elementary schools. And in the past, we've just done drinks because that's what they have requested from us. We do still have a lot of drink leftovers or leftovers from conferences. Last week, we had a lot of drink donations. It was terrific. Um, so TBD on if that's what we end up giving this year. And then the next thing that we have coming in the spring is gonna be the first annual mother-son event. We had a lot we had a lot of requests for the mother-son event since there's the boots-in-boats event. So, PTA is going to hold a mother-son event this year and we are looking at doing that in March. So, if you have a look at, hopefully we'll get some communication out on that.
Sounds great.
Awesome.
Questions, requests for PTA?
Yeah, they're busy.
Yeah, yeah. We're gonna take a break in January. January, we're, we're done. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Right, then there was also uh, Learning Garden update. Lots of good pictures in there. All right, construction update. Know we are gonna add from later in the agenda, the 2526 site planning. We're gonna move that up for the parking lots that's all consolidated.
Very good. We'll start with the update on the high school BOAG project. Uh, last week had a couple major milestones that took place. Uh, one of the big ones was the fact that the shop area, the roofers were able to complete that roof on Friday. Uh, about middle part of the week last week, there's roughly about a half to a third of that that was completed. So, the electrician and the HVAC contractor both were able to start installing some of their materials in the shop. Uh, that included electrical panels and some of the circuits and then also ductwork in the shop. Also, the masons, last week on Friday, they topped out the low-bearing wall. That would be the long corridor that runs north and south. So, that's completed. Uh, today, they actually started installing some of the block wall that's up along the existing building, the two buildings tied together. So, masons are making good progress. We'll go ahead and jump down to high school roof repairs. Last week, the roofers were able to finish installing new gutters and downspouts and also some of their coping and top of the wall sheet metal down at English hallway, also over along the uh, kitchen area and concession stand, basically the whole east face all the way over to basically the uh, weight room along the east side. BOAG greenhouses, Learning Garden greenhouse, MTI, uh, over the last week, they've uh, got contracts submitted to the district with all their backup documents. That'd be like performance payment bond, insurance and OSHA tenure, et cetera. Uh, one thing, uh, that I'm happy to report on, the school has requested reimbursement twice for expenses so far, um, on the greenhouses and through ARPA and have received two checks. Those checks combines roughly $47,000. So, that process I think is going fairly smooth so far.
Thanks, well agreed. Yes.
High school HVAC project, uh, the project's out on the street for the contractors, uh, on Friday, contractors started actually receiving the bid documents through Sept-Gon or an invite to review that. It's through a software management program we use called ProCore. So, we got that out there. We're planning on conducting a pre-bid meeting on December 2nd and an actual bid opening on December 11th.
I guess we got a question.
Sure.
You're gonna replace the heating units in the high school?
The cooling tower and then also all individual heat pumps that are fed off of that cooling tower and some boilers.
Okay.
Yeah, this is part of the original.
If that's done in the winter time, how are they gonna heat it?
Uh, no, it'll be all working sometime. We're just bidding it out. Yeah, cuz it'll take the contractor, uh, probably the full four to five months just to get that equipment to have it ready for next summer.
But the goal is to do that this summer, as long as the contractors can get all the items here and make it happen.
Yeah, we added some extra language in those bid documents cuz once they start, it's all or nothing. So, they gotta get it totally completed cuz there will not be any, any air conditioning nor heat in roughly probably 60% of the high school campus would probably be closed.
And half.
Yeah. That's pretty large area. So, we uh, really made the bid documents pretty tight that if not all equipments there onsite and can be verified by the design team by uh, middle of May, they're not able to start work this summer, be the following summer.
Let's get it here.
That is the plan, I guess.
Get her done. Don't wanna wait another year.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll flip over, take a look at the budget. First up, ranking. Uh, no change from previous months.
We're just waiting on the final round of funding for that.
I believe government's back open, so we'll see.
It'll be a while.
Yes. It has, probably can still be a while, but yes, we'll see.
Next up is the high school BOAG bond issue. Total bills this period, $880,517.18. Any questions with this budget? Yeah, do have three items for board action. Uh, they're not, the, the dollar amounts for the change orders will not reflect in this budget. So, it reflected the next month based on what the board decides. Uh, first up, GBH Builders. The GBH, their contract has uh, an line item in there of $24,000 for miscellaneous items for different things that could pop up uh, during this project. Over the last four and a half to five months, GBH has been keeping a track of the different extras. Uh, one of the items, GBH was asked to take care of a existing wall condition. It's also where the new addition ties into the two walls. You got the inner low-bearing CMU wall was not at the same height as the exterior veneer in that wall. So, there was additional wood that was required to get those together. And then also, that's where Weathercraft is also redoing the roof along there. So, it made sense to just have GBH do all that wood and get it done right cuz we gotta continue that same profile as we work our way across the north. So, there will be one more time I'll come to the board. That'll be over the locker room area. Basically, this is about half of the distance and then later we'll do the other half. But that additional wood was in amount of $2,158.1. Also, GBH had to excavate and pour a concrete mud seal. Basically, the subgrade where they were working at uh, was saturated with groundwater, got saturated groundwater to where we could not build on top of it. They had to take that material out. They poured back with concrete to be able to work off of to continue up with the build. Uh, that was in amount of $1,448.14. Also, GBH Builders had to excavate a small area on the north side of the west wing that runs that close to Crump Line. That's where the new gas service uh, for the entire high school campus comes in. Now, it used to be on the south wing. Now, it's on the uh, west wing or north corner or west wing. Uh, this was per Emery Guest's requirements and it was in amount of $828. So, those three items just mentioned, the quakes to $4,434.15. It'd be taken out of that $24,000 miscellaneous allowance. Uh, the revised total of that allowance is $19,565.85. GBH Builders, uh, this will be their second change order for the BOAG addition and it's a zero-cost change order.
Make a motion to approve the GBH Builders change order number two for the BOAG addition, uh, which is a zero-cost change order.
Second. Motion to end a second to approve the GBH Builders change order number two for the BOAG addition and zero-cost change order. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, next up is Weathercraft. Weathercraft was asked a couple months ago to see what it would cost to replace about 70 feet of existing uh, brown gutter along that east side. That'd be basically along the kitchen area. That section of roof did not get replaced with part of this project that still had warranty, but the old gutters um, were starting to look pretty rough. So, it was asked to replace that. They gave the school district a proposal. It was in the amount of $4,268. And then with that, uh, there was areas over there um, where all the wood was in good shape. It was called out on drawings to replace wooden nailers or wood blocking for the new sheet metal to attach to. Uh, once we took off the old sheet metal and filled back the rubber, the wood was still in good shape. So, it was decided not to replace good wood with newer good wood. So, we, we kept the wood and that was a credit back to the district in the amount of $6,645. So, when you take the $4,268 from that credit, this would be Weathercraft's uh, second change order for the high school roof repairs and it'd be a credit back to the district of $2,377.
Make a, make a motion to approve Weathercraft's change order number two for the high school roof repairs with a credit amount of $2,377.
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second to approve Weathercraft's change order number two for high school roof repair and the credit amount of $2,377. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, next up, Emery Sappan Sun's ESMS was directed to install a trench drain. It basically spanned the entire width of that new 18-foot wide sidewalk. I think it was right around 16 feet, a new trench drain at the base of that sidewalk where it tied into the existing concrete down by the concession stand area. Um, full disclosure, whenever they were doing work in that area and had that new concrete parking lot cut down, a pop-up thunderstorm took place over the summer and uh, a lot of water went the direction of the concession stand area. So, it was decided best long-term fix to enter be put in a drain to actually catch all that water before it could go back towards the concession stand. And then that got tied in with existing storm pack that was underground. So, uh, this work would be Emery Sappan Sun's change order number two and it's in the amount of $6,377.04.
Will we approve uh, ESMS's change order number two in the amount of $6,377.04?
I have second. Motion and a second to approve Emery Sappan Sun's change order number two in the amount of $6,377.04. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Very good. That's all I have for the board. Any other comments, questions? I appreciate the board's sound.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'm betting that we just spoke on it.
Are we good? Oh, sorry. Let me hold up here. How about Mr. Chris Davis? Do you have any updates or information you'd like to share?
Nothing more than the board session. I didn't address any questions that were asked.
Which we did have a good facilities, district facilities committee meeting last week and so talked about lots of things related to the current uh, construction project and then the anticipated bond issue in April and what that would be for our district as well. So, I'm happy to talk about that or learn more about that. And then the um, prospect of our new greenhouses that we're working on um, for South Campus and North Campus. So.
I know with the city, that one of the suggestions was to, was to look at maybe angled parking. I'm assuming that would be part of this.
Yeah, if, if this gets approved, I'll talk with Crockett about, about that. And uh, my expectation is we'll lose spaces typically to go to angle.
Okay.
But I'll still have to, you know, vet it out and figure out what the best scenario for you guys would be.
And so then tonight, we also do have a fee proposal for the Southeast High School parking lot uh, replacement with PWA Architects uh, and for, for the architectural and the engineering uh, expenses as well, uh, at an amount of $52,190. Uh, the preliminary project cost opinion would be between 1 million and 1.1 million at this time, which includes the additive alternative for additional parking going east to add four more spaces to that area. And at this point, we've learned.
Forty or four?
Four, forty.
Okay. So, like, that's a lot of money.
Wow.
Parking is a premium here.
Right.
Wow.
So, Chris, just, just confirming, this is a, just for kind of the architectural and engineering fees, right?
Correct.
And then if this is something that after we do all of the preliminary plans, we decide not to go with more than, more, more, you know, probably athletes said, uh, won't go with because of cost at the time, right? These can always be, drawings can be carried over then to whenever we do have the funds.
Correct.
All happen.
I'm entering the motion.
Make a motion to approve the 2526 site planning, engineering and architectural fee from the high, for the high school parking lot replacements as presented.
A second.
Motion to approve the, I don't have that wording up. It's really fast enough. What he said.
Yeah.
2526 site planning, engineering and archit fee for the high school parking lot replacement as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Our program evaluation for health and physical education.
So, we have our esteemed colleagues from that department here to talk a little bit about that tonight and give us some updates and stuff like, uh, great things are happening.
Yeah.
Whoever wants to go first can go first.
Well, I guess I'm the youngest age group here, so I guess I'll go first. Um, my name is Elizabeth Craig. I'm the PE teacher at the elementary school. And um, we have had a great start to the year. We're doing a lot of exciting things there at the elementary. Um, we just finished the Kids' Heart Challenge and we were able to raise $1,008 for the American Heart Association. We had a lot of fun doing that this year and I'm very proud of our kids. They learned a lot about um, being heart healthy. And then um, I really emphasize this year um, where our life-saving devices are throughout our school. So, um, hopefully if you went up to any elementary student and asked where the AEB is or where the um, the D-choker is or any of the lighting control kits, they could tell you. Um, we went over it and uh, over it and over it and talked about um, how even at their age, they could help save a life. So, um, I'm very proud of that and um.
Could all the teachers tell you the same thing?
I would hope so. Teachers have maps. So, um, I would hope so.
It should all be in our emergency response.
Yeah. We'll get right on that one. Next, we have, um, we've had the opportunity for some of us to be certified in um, archery instruction. And um, Mrs. Stankley and I and a few um, other people from the building got to travel to Hickman High School and go through a training course, which was really fun that day. And so, now we can start um, archery in our elementary program and then um, have an archery club. Uh, we still have to, you know, figure more things out with the age groups and how we want to do that, but um, equipment is gonna be ordered and headed our way. So, that's very exciting.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, tomorrow starts the stack-up program, which is cup stacking. And um, we do this program each year in November and we try to help set a, a world record of the most students cup stacking all around the world. And it, it used to be just one day and now it's three days. So, I get to count my attendance and send that in to try to help set a world record. Last year, we did. Um, this year, I think we're trying to break 775,000 people. Um, cup stacking. So, that's exciting. That'll be um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then my, my fourth day of classes, we'll do it on Friday. So, everybody will get a chance to do that. And then, um, let's see, the only concern I have is the roof, it still drips when it gets humid and um, the floor's starting to buckle kind of by half-court. And when we had the roof or the floor redone this summer, um, the varnish didn't have a chance to dry and it dripped on it. So, there's like a little textured area there kind of at the, the half-court, mid-court area. But um, other than that, like PE is going fantastic. Um, the kids are excited when they come to the gym every day. I'm excited to see them, so. Thank you.
Not specifically for you, is, is the, is the roof part of what we're looking at?
That's what I was just thinking, yeah.
No, so um, that unit had, we've had trouble with that since the first year it was installed.
Every, every May slash June, when it gets humid, it's just that one spot every single year.
Those guys left too early, didn't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, it, it won't be a surprise. We talk about it every, every summer.
Yeah, but you can feel it now. Like, if you run your hand across the floor, you can feel it now. We're starting to.
Yeah.
Yes, that's something we're looking into fixing.
We do, yes, we will too do that. And uh, yeah. We pride different things every year and so far, nothing seems to be a good stick.
I know. And then I try to leave, because I talk to you every summer, like when we leave for summer school, it's over, like, I put buckets out there to catch the drips or trash cans to catch the drips. And, you know, once I, I leave that, you know, I'm out of the building for what, basically one month and I you never know what's gonna happen during that month. So.
Yeah, I passed there as well, through there as well. And some, most of the time, it's, there's nothing, but then one week, there will be drips there.
Yeah, it's just so sporadic and it's just, it's the humidity. It's the humidity that, whatever does with that unit.
Yep. And there's two units in there. One is fine, it works fine. The other one, every year since it was installed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so look at it again.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
I'm Chris Harris. I uh, am a health, PE and weights teacher at Middle School. Um, I'm here on behalf of Coach Crowe and uh, Coach Martin. Um, Coach has got a basketball game. Coach Martin's young, that way. Got very many things to do. So, um, so I'll walk you through uh, our, our three different programs that we have. I'll start with PE, you know, we serve fifth through eighth. Um, and in that, you know, we have several different things that we do throughout the course of the school year, but we, we start with our fitness testing. Um, we do that once a quarter. Um, when the kids will run the mile, they will do push-ups, setups, um, shuttle run, sit and reach. Um, we've done that for second quarter, gotten, gotten those days out of the way. And uh, now we're into volleyball and the kids are uh, starting that unit. Eventually, we'll phase that out as we get through uh, Thanksgiving break and get on to the basketball. Um, we do uh, jump rope testing. One of the things we got from vertical alignment and knowing with those kiddos over there, that's something that, you know, they can continue to build on and improve. So, we'll have them jump rope, uh, when they see us every other day. And then uh, once every couple of weeks, we will test for time and see how many jump ropes they can do in a minute. And um, they, they enjoy it. Most of them enjoy the kind of competition aspect of that and they're trying to get better. Coach Bradley and I used to enjoy doing that too. You could see how many we did. So, um, PE is doing, doing pretty well. Uh, I think we're getting served in the sense of our equipment stuff. Um, we just had the uh, motors and basketball goals uh, all replaced. We know that was a can of worms as we got into it with the you know, needing one replaced, but then getting the uh, the code violation or whatever you wanna call it about having to have one motor per goal now instead of two goals per one motor. So, that's, that's all just about done. I don't know if it's entirely wrapped up, but that does seem like your electrical work.
I do believe it's all wrapped up. JR sent me a few pictures, um, last, I think it was Thursday or Friday last week.
Yeah, I think they moved the last scissor lift out of there today. So, um, we're, we're very glad. We had a couple of days outside, which didn't impact me very much because my schedule's a little bit different. Um, so, it's, it's been nice, which takes us into weights. Uh, this is our first year where we've had weights be a uh, replacement class for PE for our seventh and eighth graders. So, as opposed to um, being able to take it as an elective, we've opened it up so that they can take that course um, for a full year and have that be their PE's credit. Um, so, we have to do fitness testing in there as well since that replacement took place. Um, but I alone do that in the middle school and it's a dream come true for me personally. And I'm very appreciative of that room and the time that we could spend in there. Um, those of you who don't know, I went K through 12 here and um, was very avid in participating in athletics. And we didn't have that kind of instruction uh, when I was in school. And I, I know for me, when I went to college, it really put me behind and my learning curve was very, very steep. Um, and my goal in having those classes is to make sure our kids don't have that same climb and fight that they have to have, that they can reach their potential a lot faster. So, um, we have that. I run a, a very specific program. It's slightly different from the high school. We do use rat, uh, rat coach, just like the high school does. Um, but in my program, we kinda go in eight-week segments. Um, it's auto-regulatory progressive resistance exercise. And you can look up, there's a fellow who was my, one of my coaches in college. His Brian Mann. He's a professor uh, at Texas A&amp;M University. He kind of re-engineered that system. It's been around since the 40s, but um, re-engineered that. And that's kind of the system that we use. And we try to integrate some other things into it too for, for fun, you know, like I like to read, being a former science teacher and kind of implement some new things into that. So, we'll do a little bit here and there. Um, this, this, December, I'm hoping, as we get closer to break, to add in what we call tri-phasic lifting. That is something from a fellow named Cal Deets, who's worked with several NHL franchises and with the university in Minnesota. It's kind of been the rage for ten to fifteen years and all of sports performance lifting and that kind of stuff, so. We'll, we'll try to integrate some of that as well, that's been a real blast to have that as a class. And I, I can't imagine asking for anything improvement with that program, the only thing I'd ever ask is originally when we had that room, there was a door in the back. And I, I would love to have that door back, not for my own safety, but I think if an emergent situation arises, it would allow us the possibility of escape in a different direction. Because if you recall, as we've been around for a while, that room was a science classroom and it opened up to the coach's office behind and you had other, other avenues of exit and originally when those plans went through, that, that must be left. And then it was, it was sealed off and, and so, you know, not a, not a, a dire thing in the moment, I don't, I think it's probably one of the safest rooms in the district, outside of the beers. If, if there's something bad going on, but you know, just something that maybe if there's a rainy day, we can think about that, so. The only thing left, I guess, to tell you about is our, our health, we teach seventh and eighth grade health. I have been using or have been teaching the eighth grade health for six years now. Almost exclusively, first year Reagan and I shared that and this is the first year I've shared it since, I think.
Did you do any improvement?
No, no, so with seventh grade, and that, and that's been going pretty consistently, I have a I have a pretty, I think, solid curriculum kind of built up, we did our power standards and we chose five that were probably the most, what I thought were the most important, I view it as a supplement in terms of a class to our science curriculum, I try to build that up. I know that several years ago, the wonderful Joe Brown kind of rewrote the science curriculum that I had written before when I was at the middle school and the scope and sequence changed and some things and I would really love to see some more biology come back at younger ages for our kids in sixth and seventh grade, and the seventh grade traditionally always been physical science here, but there are some things that I think make it really, really difficult for me seeing kids every other day in health class to get taught in a timely fashion, because they don't have the requisite information prior, they haven't, they haven't learned those things, mainly in regard to cells and cell function. It's hard to teach them all the things that I'm supposed to without having to go back and spend lots of extra time, so. Sometimes we're fighting for our lives at the end of the semester to get through everything because we're having to spend that extra time there, but to me, it's a hundred percent worth it, you know, because I haven't done biology at the high school for several years, it's, it's, it's stuff they're going to need to know and have down to be able to use, so we fight that fight, now, I was able to, like it or not, take on the, the fight for the seventh grade curriculum this year and doing that, because Coach Martin and I are both teaching that, this is my first year doing that, we've had if you count Hunter and I, I think seven teachers teaching that class in the last six years. And so there has been an evisceration of all things curriculum to that, and so we are at the beginning of the year, we wrote power standards and we're working on it, we're building up our non-textbook supplements for our curriculum and trying to work to make that something, you know, that's really beneficial to the kids and spending that extra time on it, and so it's not perfect, but we're, we're working on getting her there and so patience in that is, is all I ask there, we're making it happen. You all have any questions for me as to what we do in the middle school, the health PE and weights? Thank you.
Sounds like you did a good job.
Yeah.
Lots to cover there, so.
Yeah, you did great.
Thank you.
Lee Bradley, I'm our, so I teach ninth grade health at high school and I teach nine through twelve, I have two sections of weights and I have one sec, sorry, three section of voice, you know, I have one section of aerobics, so what you have in front of you, those handouts are, are kind of things, the artifacts that cover all three of those, so the health section of that, you're going to see the driver's ed, that's just an example of a post-test that we used. We get a lot of fourteen, fifteen-year-olds that are at this time taking their permits, a lot of kids are turning fifteen right now. So this has been one that we found to be really, really important and really, really helpful. And so this is probably one of our most difficult tests that we'll take in health because the test is eighty questions and then, so there's an entire bank that the department will use in terms of getting a twenty to twenty-five on your permit test, so we pulled from all of those to give them every possible solution, there are some that maybe you won't have, you won't see on a permit test, like how to change a tire, but it's still important information for a young kid to know, and then we go, then we go and talk about your intermediate license versus your full license. And so that is one section that we are in, we just finished it up and now we're on our drugs and alcohol unit. And then another section that we changed this year, we got rid of the thirteen reasons why book and the bullying unit and we changed it to essentially facing stress and and how to handle stress and then how to handle adversity, we, we talked about an array of of mental techniques, talked about breathing, we talked about turning stress into, using stress to our advantage. Kind of like Coach Garris, I've read, I've read many books on the mental conditioning of, of young people, I use it in my wrestling practices. I use it in my, my health practices, talks about just making stress your friend and viewing stress as a positive thing versus a negative thing and the kids found some really cool things. Found some things interesting in terms of doing that right there, making stress your friend and turning it into a positive can potentially add years to your life, which was profound for them, because they explained that you can live longer, I mean, just by the, just by changing and reframing your brain, so it's been really cool for them to see that. And then you have in front of you, switching gears to aerobics, I call that my workout library for aerobics. I let my, I say girls, because most of them in that class are girls, I let them kind of decide what topic they want to cover and then I found a lot of things online. And then we do not whatever they want, but I let them choose what they want to do for that day and then we just keep building to that, that library and I've also had them, they had a week to prepare something for me, I gave them a rubric and they prepared whether they wanted it to be yoga, whether they wanted to be some sort of HIIT workout, which is just high-intensity interval training. Whether they wanted it to be Zumba's on there, there's one that they have really taken a liking to. I don't show them this, but it's the dance workout. They love it, they get into it, like I said, it's like ninety-nine percent girls in my aerobics class, so they, they kind of, they take that and on with it, so that's aerobics in a nutshell. And then, yeah.
There's cameras in the comments. There's no one needs a merit on his summary.
Yes, I'll eat that one, that's fine. And then the last thing you'll see is, it says personal records at the top, that's for the weight training portion. We're, like Coach Garris said, we're a little bit different. And, and I'll just quickly explain kind of how this works, they run off of a percentage of their max. Basically this year, the entire PE department was new besides me, and so this is a, a format that Coach Tanner brought in with him. They work off of, most of the time it's anywhere between seventy to ninety percent of their one rep max. And then they'll use it for, we'll put on the rack performance, you know, you have, let's say, four sets of four at eighty percent. And so there's charts all over the weight room that say, okay, eighty percent of my, if my one rep max is two hundred, eighty percent of that is, I'm not good at math, so we'll just stick with that easy one, is eighty percent, right? And they'll just look at their chart, they'll look at their, the percentage and then they'll go perform those specific lifts. We only use that for core lifts. Everything else is kind of up to the student to figure out, we have core lifts and we have what we call auxiliary lifts and each kid's going to lift a different amount or a different ratio. So we kind of leave that part to them with some, you know, sometimes a nudge like, hey, you can do more type thing, but so when, a typical workout for us is, is a warm-up and it's a core exercise and then they'll do four to six what we call auxiliary exercises, which they're just supplemental exercises to the cores. Could be for explosiveness, could be for power, could be for mobility, and then we have some sort of core at the end of the day, whether it could be a core, it could be a plyo, plyometric circuit, which can include box jumps, which can include banded sprints. And then it could also be some hip mobility stuff, some knee stability stuff, some ankle mobility and stability. And so that's kind of weights to us, we'll do what we call max out every nine weeks, it's not perfect because the semester is not a complete eighteen weeks, it'll be, it'll be like nine, I think it'll be another seven or eight, we'll max out again at, at eight weeks, about before Christmas break and before the semester ends. And so what you're seeing in front of you is each kid, so the far left column, I've re, I've removed their names for privacy purposes, but each one of those kids has a weight, like a body weight, and then they have a one rep max in bench press, a one rep max in squat on the far right-hand side, and then they have a one rep max in power clean. Power clean's new to the kids this year because the last three years with Coach Ross we did what's called pain clean, which means it comes from like the thighs up, power clean comes from the ground up, which is a little bit different for them and it's a little bit more difficult, it's more of a compound movement. And so, and so we're starting super light just to make sure we get the form down. And then we have what's called a power ratio, that way your, your little guy or gal that, you know, that maybe doesn't lift three hundred pounds can have a high power ratio and still be competitive in, in their field based on their body weight and how much they lift, so it's just weight lifted divided by their body weight, and that gives them their power ratio, which just explains to them basically how much they can lift compared to their size and they can compare, I, I can compare a power ratio with someone who's a hundred pounds and it means the same thing to both of us. I think that's everything I have for you.
Very good.
Who wouldn't want to dance to an eighties dance?
Unfortunately, they did not know the song, so.
I really would, yeah.
They did not know the songs.
Questions for me? The other thing that I have for you, I didn't make you guys a copy of this, they do in health, sorry, I'll backtrack. They create what we call is the driver's ed project and they select five cars from various websites and then they essentially have to buy a car. And by the end of it, they're like, gee, me and Christmas, like there's, they have some appreciation for their parents at that point because like we make them, you know, graph the average cost of a car, they have to calculate the insurance and they're like, wait a minute, I can get a discount if I'm a good student? Yes, you can. So we talk about the good student discount and like how important it is to, you know, to get good grades because it is beneficial, not only here, but obviously in so many different aspects. And then they will calculate a trip to the mall, just so they know how much it costs them to drive to the mall and back. And then they have to figure out that buying the car is not just paying for the car, you have taxes and you have insurance and you have property, like property tax after it's bought, you have sales tax in the moment and then what percentage of that is sales tax and all that stuff, so at the end of it, they're like, gee, me and Christmas, I just wanted to buy a car. So they do have, they, they, it creates a, basically obviously more knowledge as well, but also a deeper appreciation for their folks that are that are really showing out the money, you guys only, you, you only give the students two thousand dollars and they, and they figure it out from there. So it might come to like, we make them, okay, here's a minimum wage with your sports, how much can you work, how much do you need to work? Can you afford this car given, you know, the amount of time that you have, so it's, it's cool for them, they won't tell you that, but it is cool for them to see all that and like all the, I call it the behind-the-scenes stuff of buying a car that we don't think about, so.
Personally, I love that, yeah.
Yeah, I bet you do.
You should, some of them get some, some pretty cheap cars and then they're going to keep the rest of the money for themselves and it doesn't work like that, but.
Nice try.
Nice try, no cigar, yes.
Questions?
No.
If I could take off my PE health and my teaching hat and put on my coaching hat, do you guys have an update on what you want to do with the current ag building since I've spoke to you in June?
So that is still a topic of conversation, it was brought up at our last district facilities committee as well. And so I think the last recommendation was to, while we do think that usage for the building that's multipurpose, center is a great one, we're also going to just possibly send out a quick survey to our staff and see if there's any other ideas out there, but otherwise, yeah.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate each of you, learned something new tonight from each one of you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we are moving through our consent agenda.
On the policy, I just would like to highlight one of those, it is policy GCPB resignation of professional staff members, and so with that policy, we are updating the liquidated damages section that starts June first. And so over the summer typically, in the past, we've seen like every, I think every two weeks it changes a different percentage, and so this time we thought we'd start that with the, a June percentage from, started in the past, it started six percent, for the month, we just wanted to, to have a eight percent of the contract. July through August fifteenth, it started out at seven percent and ratcheted its way up to ten percent. And so we'd just like to start July one through August fifteenth at ten percent. And then August sixteenth through the end of the contract period, so all the way through the school year. It wasn't twenty-five percent and we have really not been enforcing that percent of liquidated damages. So we bring, we would like to bring it down to fifty percent, which is still more than our current ten percent that we put into effect. There's also the early separation notice incentive, just for a second time, I'm not going to read that. Something that we had talked about with the finance committee last year and then we, the board had approved that incentive in June with our new budget and so basically certified, full-time certified staff, whether it is a or if it's a early retirement or an early resignation up through December thirty-first, then that's a certificated employee who is full-time and finishes out their current, finishes out their current contract would be eligible for a five hundred dollar release separation notice incentive.
And when we say contract, is that the full value of the contract or the remaining value of the contract? I think I know the answer.
Are you talking about the liquidated damages?
Yes.
Go with the, what's stated on their contract.
So the full value?
Full value.
Not what's remaining?
Not paraded, okay.
And then so these, these changes have already been reviewed by MSBA?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have any indication what this is like with peers, like other districts?
The liquidated damages part, it varies, honestly, some are more lenient, like CPS or districts our size or smaller are charging the same or more for liquidated damages.
Okay. And then policy ADF, the district wellness program, the change in that was just changing the school hours. It was originally what, midnight to thirty minutes after the end of the school day? So that's been changed to reflect our school hours, eight to three, and then J E C A type two is eligibility to enroll and that just makes it more formal as far as employees who live outside the district bringing their students in to the district as well as opening that up to contractors and employees of contractors who work a certain amount within the district each week. Okay, so I'm going to quickly go through these new and revised policies where policy ADF district, district wellness program. Policy GCPB resignation of professional staff members and policy J E C A dash two eligibility to enroll. Our revised, or reviewed policies. Policy ADF district wellness program, policy BBE one, school board vacancy, this is probably maybe not the right order, but I'm just reading them down through the line here. Policy B B C C one, appointed board of officials. Policy BF, school board policy process. Policy CB, school superintendent, policy DD, grants. Policy DGA, authorized signature. Policy BBC, board member resignation, policy BCA dash one, board organizational meeting. Policy VCCA, MSBA delegate and alternative. Policy BHA, board training and development. Policy CFB, evaluation principles. Policy DEA, revenues from tax sources and policy DH dash one, bonded employees and officers. Alright, then we're going to move to our employment, we have new hires, Tabitha, shoot twenty-five, twenty-six transfer from paraprofessional to facility support assistant. Is that it? That's it?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second question, are we going to have to hire another paraprofessional in her place?
We will, yes.
So, but whose position she's in?
She is such a I don't know if I can remember the name, it's been, that position's been open for several months, so I'm not sure I can tell you whose spot by name that is, but it was a position. I can tell you whose spot by name that is, but it was a position that we've already had in the budget, and has been posted on the website for several months, and it hasn't filled.
Someone create another position?
No, just trying to combine, uh, some different aspects, skillsets that we need in that position that will help, um, you know, maintenance, uh, on the ground, but also in the service, uh, customer service area as well, and, um, in central office area, with preventative maintenance and setting up different, um, perpetual calendars, uh, preventative maintenance, things like that, so. It's like she's got the skillset to do both.
I know you said it was budget neutral or FTE neutral, is it?
FTE.
Budget neutral? Is that a lateral move from her para?
She is, so, um, that position will pay a little bit more than what she is currently making as a paraprofessional, but no more than anyone else would make in that same position.
But that was already budgeted for, is that correct?
Yeah.
No, not in a supervisory role, or whatever her, her title change was to, they're saying that that was, so FTE that, that we are replacing with this elevated position is going to have a higher dollar.
It will, it will for her, yes, as an individual, um, but maintenance and, um, central office staff, follow the salary schedules, and so those are, but we feel with her or someone else, it would be at a higher rate based on the salary schedule.
Salary schedules are already set.
Yeah, so, I don't know exactly if that's, missing the point, I think, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing the point, so I'll just be quiet. Uh, the only other question I had is, um, I know we have worked hard to get a format for your, um, evaluation, and since we put in, um, that about the principles, I just be, would be curious to know, doesn't have to be a spread specifics persons, but it might be nice to see what the format of that is, just
Sure.
from a board educational standpoint.
For the, for the building principles, the format, sure, yeah, we can do that. And, um, and through my evaluation process, as I gather artifacts, uh, that might be one of those things that we share anyway. I know we've got, uh, you know, we've got all of our building administrators, their growth plans completed across the district, and so, uh, those, one of those will be used as a sample in the artifacts that I share with you guys anyway, so.
Any other comments? All right. With a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? Right, how about our minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes is posted.
Motion and second to approve the minutes, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ready, financial review.
Okay, so the financial review, you are going to find the cash flow summary for the month of October. For fund one and two combined, we are reporting approximately five point eight million dollars in the operating and teacher funds. Our balances have increased in comparison to the same timeframe from last year. Revenues are mainly reflective of the state basic formula payments from DESI and Prop C funds. The strong start in fund one and two will help us cover expenses for salaries, benefits, and supplies as we incur them throughout the school year. The balance in fund three for debt service is coming in at a little over two million dollars. Revenue for fund three during the month of October was approximately eight thousand five hundred dollars, mainly from delinquent taxes paid and interest on accounts. Expenditures for October reflect a eight hundred and twenty-five dollar administrative fee for the series twenty eighteen bond payment. Our debt service tax levy does remain strong and will allow us to continue to pay down district debt on our regular schedule. The capital projects fund saw expenditures come in at one hundred and one thousand dollars from bus five and nine principal and interest payments, a district truck purchase, and the high school re-roof in partnership with weathercraft. We did receive a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from DESI in the classroom trust fund. However, because of, because of the timing with the escrow sweeps, it does look like we subtracted twenty-four thousand dollars in revenue on this report. Uh, Carrie is working on corrections between September and October, will make sure that those, uh, reports are updated. The ending balance for fund four was a little over two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. In sub fund nine, uh, we're showing revenue for the month of October at forty thousand dollars, uh, from interest earned on bond funds. Expenses this month reflect high school bond and construction expenses in the amount of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Our balance in sub fund nine is sitting at a little over ten million dollars, and liquid funds with Mocat investments currently are at four point eight million dollars. When looking at the Rankin spreadsheet, again, there are no changes. Uh, the latest request for reimbursement, and hopefully the last, uh, was submitted back in September. Uh, the government shutdown did postpone the payment process, so we'll see where we are over the next couple of weeks with that project. In the next report, you'll find the balances for bank and cash reconciliation statement for October. You'll notice this rap, report reconciles with the cash flow summary report. The check register for the month of October is available for review as well. You'll be able to see every check that was sent out sorted by vendor for the month. The accounts payable report will show you what we pay in utilities, vendor checks, refunds for items, building supplies, staff trains, and software subscriptions, just to mention a few. The expense revenue report has been shared with you as well. The report will show you financial activity for the month of October under the month-to-date column in MTD. You can also see year-to-date activity compared with last year. Overall, at this time, this report was generated, we are showing that twenty-two point nine percent of revenues were realized, and twenty-four point one percent of expenses were realized as we finished out the month. As you review the report, revenue is reflective of state payments in various areas, including Prop C and transportation, student activities and club activity fees, along with interest income. On the expense side, we see the regular costs associated with salaries and health insurance, athletic expenses, equipment and supply expenses for repairs and building projects. Technology-related supplies include the time clock subscription, the safe share subscription to meet tech safety guidelines, along with tech supplies and computers for various labs across the district. And if it's the code sixty-five forty-one, uh, that is reflective of high school roofing projects from storm damage, replacement of doors, and high school library carpet. Overall, we are off to a great, uh, fiscal start to our school year.
Just wanna make a suggestion, certainly don't have to do this, but I'd like to have the, at least the conversation. Um, I know at one point, it's probably good for our finance committee, um, we looked at this so that we can annualize where we're at, um, food and meeting expenses, uh, right, there's a lot related to our high school teams and, and the aspects they did, just to have knowledge of what those breakdowns are maybe.
Yep.
Knowing that our audit is coming up, I know that it's something that people have brought up previously, so, I don't know, thoughts on that? At one point, when we looked at it, and this was probably four years ago now, um, the annualized amount was upwards of almost a, an, o- over a teacher FTE, like a new, new start, so it was like fifty-six thousand, if I remember right, uh, for the year that we spent on food or food at meetings and so on and so forth, so, just a thought, I'm more than willing to hear other conversation about it.
I kind of, last month and this month, noticed the same thing, I was curious, that separated out what that looked like, that cost.
So maybe for our next, uh, finance meeting, just have that.
Yeah.
Just knowing where we're going towards that May-June timeframe and what we, what we heard, conference and some of those pieces, so.
Yeah.
Sure.
A lot, a lot of those food costs, especially, um, in relation to athletics, comes out of their accounts as opposed to.
Yeah, their fund breaks and then different things that they do in their booster club accounts, yeah.
But to be able to speak to that and articulate that.
You mentioned their booster club accounts, are those actually then wrapped up into what we see here? Are those separate accounts?
Um, it depends on, um, the like the, the band boosters, and then you've got the booster club, the big booster club, so those probably are not. But there are other clubs like FFA and all of those things that, um, they do run their accounts through the schools, so, yeah, so it's individual.
Making sure to draw a distinction for those who are already doing it separate, right? They don't get lumped in the same.
Yeah, that'd be kind of nice to see. Yep, I agree.
And then I know I had sent a note on the water and sewer, right, that's all due to the increase, the city increase.
I believe so, yes, um, you know, I look at those each month as we, I sign off on each one of those as they come through, and so, um, there are significant increases, not necessarily in usage, but in what it's costing us.
Yeah, year, year-to-date, we're already at thirty-four thousand, and last year, the same time, it was six thousand.
I think everybody's seeing that.
It's insane, it is.
And then in fact, the businesses that use more water are paying a higher burden, a higher share of that cost. As well, so, it's even worse.
Yeah, I think we, in our initial budget, I think we increased our working budget, um, some in anticipation of what that was gonna look like, but, um, it obviously was not enough, so.
They entertain a motion to authorize the payment of bills? A motion and a second to authorize payment of bills, any further discussion?
Yeah, I might pull the action out of some bills off of it. And I thought we voted on those before, I remember staying on before.
Is that just last month?
Well, there was another deal last month, and I thought they already paid it.
Which one was it?
The, there's two, two checks in there, the club for summer school. I thought it was paid before.
I'll check into it.
Okay. Still want to abstain this time if this was.
Check's already been cut, right? So.
The check would have been cut, it, um, well.
If I get it again, I'll bring it back.
And we think.
For doing that, hopefully that's not the case, but.
It won't be to me, it'll be the opposite.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. So. How do I say this? So we want to authorize payment of bills, less the optimist club payment. All right. With that, new motion, please, or amended motion.
I'll amend the motion to exclude the optimist club.
Get a second? Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the payment of bills, less the optimist club payment. All those in favor? Any opposed? Right? entertain a motion for the optimist club.
Motion to approve the optimist, uh, payments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve optimist club payment, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstained? Any opposed? All right, we are good with that.
Really quickly, who seconded that?
Right, superintendent report.
Okay, all right, thank you, we're gonna start off with the safety and security board update, uh, tonight. And so, start off with reunification training, we've talked about, a little bit about this before, but around fifteen, Southern Room staff members from all buildings and the central office attended a two-day reunification training on October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth in Columbia. It was hosted by the Boone County Office of Emergency Management, uh, which is also, and it was led by the nationally recognized, I love you guys, foundation. The training focused on the standard reunification method, a proven framework for safely reconnecting students with families after an emergency. Day one included classroom instruction on reunification roles, planning, and the standard response protocol, while day two featured a full-scale, hands-on reunification exercise. This training helps strengthen the district's readiness and ensures teams are well-prepared to respond effectively during a reunification event. And school district will be using the train to update our own district reunification plan. The district safety committee met on October fifteenth to review ongoing safety initiatives and upcoming training opportunities. National Police Department shared updates, including a full key fob access for all officers and plans to install police knocks boxes. The committee discussed the two-day reunification training and how the information learned will help shape Southern Room's plan. Additional updates include the district's cardiac emergency response plan and current water testing for get the let-out. Ongoing topics reviewed included building camera needs, emergency drills, consistent exterior window and door numbering across the district, updating building maps, and school safety goals. The committee also continued discussions on drug dog sweeps and potential random drug testing with tiered education supports. The district continues to work on upgrades for doors, windows, uh, safety film for windows, along with door lock systems to maintain a safe learning environment. And basically, overall, as we progress through the school year, the safety of our students and staff remains our highest priority. Continued training, strengthening safety procedures, and ongoing collaboration with local emergency partners all reflect the district's unwavering commitment to provide a safe, secure, and supportive learning environment. So we've got, that's our safety and security update. Um, let's see, next up, we do have a four-day school week, um, update, and so, I just wanted a quick review of the agenda that we had for our four-day school week committee meeting held on November third. Uh, we had, uh, we went over survey results for, uh, the committee, the student survey, the staff survey, and the parent survey. Uh, we also had, uh, feedback from school districts that explored the four-day week, uh, but not, but did not opt in. And so those, uh, updates came from Mobley and Mexico, uh, along with Fulton. There was information shared by the Warrenton School District, uh, Jill Beatty. Uh, Brandy Clark presented the primary and elementary school, uh, information update. And Mr. Watson presented, provided the Osage four-day school week, uh, preliminary, uh, update for primary and elementary. And then we also had some updates for the Bursales, uh, four-day week elementary feedback, and so make sure the board, uh, has access to all of that information. Uh, we also did discuss that there would be a, a four-day week community forum on November eighteenth, at six P M, in the high school auditorium. And then we discussed the next steps in timeline, uh, which after that, uh, four-day school week committee, we knew that we were going to have the school board meeting tonight, November seventeenth, followed by the community forum tomorrow night. And that the board plans to vote on the four-day school week during its regular monthly meeting on Monday, December the fifteenth. With the, with that said, last time, so we've got, we do have survey results, uh, from the students, um, staff and parents. Last time we went through these item by item, is that what you would like to do again tonight?
What do we want to do that in our work session?
Work session, yeah.
Okay.
I'd rather be cognizant of their time and those pieces, so.
That's, that's why I asked, so, uh, that'll be fine, and we do have hard copies of all the, all those surveys for the board as well during the work session, so. Let's see, with the mention of, um, the drug testing through the safety committee, um, we did do, one of the topics that was brought up would be, uh, for us to begin testing our seventh and eighth graders at the middle school, uh, with the current twelve-panel, uh, drug test that we have at the high school. Uh, the cost is twenty-five dollars and fifteen cents per student. Currently, we do have a budget of three thousand dollars at the high school for drug testing. Currently costs about four hundred and seventeen dollars each time we do bring the, the company in to do the, uh, drug testing, we test about, we test fifteen students each time they come in. Right now, that three thousand dollars does not get us all the way through the year with high school, um, students. Just kind of keep that in mind, and so if we did want to, uh, create a budget for next year, uh, to allow us to randomly drug test middle school students in seventh and eighth grade that are participating in mission sports, we would need to think about what, uh, kind of a budget we would want to put into place for that. There are other school districts around us that do participate in middle school drug testing for students, and so, uh, it would not be out of the norm for us to do that.
How many do you know participating versus not participating?
Turn to send out a survey for our area school districts, I would say it was about fifty-fifty.
Okay.
So, that, we get closer to any more information for that, then we can definitely create a list of school districts that aren't doing that.
And we bring that to our finance committee.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. For sure.
So when would we have to make that decision?
Uh, we think that, uh, it's something that we want to make sure that we do right when we implement it, so, I think that we can add it to the finance committee, um, agenda, and make it part of the upcoming budget for next year, so. We'd have time to think about what, uh, budget we'd like to have, and if we need to increase size as well.
That'd be something that, uh, I'm sure the principals would want to add to their handbooks as well.
Definitely, yes. Let's see, also, uh, the Rankin Cooperative Agreement, uh, you know, we continue to work on that. Uh, last time, uh, in October, we had discussed the changes that the board had made, uh, back in September, uh, we received some feedback from Rankin on, uh, those initial requests, uh, then I submitted that information to Rankin, and so, uh, they had some trouble Uh, then I submitted that information to Rankin, and so, uh, they had some trouble reading the document as a Google document with the comments, so, um, I did get back, uh, the end of last week that, uh, they finally were able to read the comments and things from the board, and so they would like to set up another time for me to visit with them, so. Uh, when I set that up, if, uh, maybe you would like to be part of that conversation, you're more than welcome to join, and I'll be happy to share that.
Okay.
Not as much movement there, I thought I had. There we go. Surprise, right? Um, let's see, district food drive, there is, there are all of the staff across the district are participating and encouraged along with their families and our students, uh, to participate in a district-wide food drive sponsored by CTA, um, to help our families in need, and so we talked with our CTA representatives this morning, and we think there's about between seventy-five and eighty, uh, families that we will be able to help with. Food baskets, Christmas baskets, and so I know many of you at the table, uh, help support that and donate to that cause, so we appreciate that. And look forward to our continued support of that, with the deadline being December twelfth, for CTA to be able to put those baskets together. And I think that's it, yes.
Ready?
Okay, so some good news, um, attendance rates remain high, and I know we talk about this all the time, uh, it's just amazing to see, um, our number, so currently date range is ten-nine to eleven-twelve, and we were at ninety-five point one-three percent. And I do know that we talked about that and how amazing that is, but just to put it into perspective, the state released a report, and the state average, uh, for last school year, twenty-four, twenty-five, was seventy-eight point five. So just to put that into perspective on where we are and how well our students do at getting to school and how well our administration do on making sure that that happens, uh, it's, it's pretty outstanding, so, uh, really good job there. And then I know we had some issues with the enrollment document, uh, we just accidentally updated, uploaded the wrong tab, um, but it should be corrected now on your, um, agenda. Um, but if you look at November of last year, twenty-four, total enrollment there was one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven. Uh, currently, November twenty, of twenty-five, we're at eighteen ninety-four, so pretty steady on where we were at from last year to this year. Um, again, if you look at that May number, so where we ended school last year, eighteen seventy-eight, so we are still up a little bit from there. Um, I did also look at our October numbers, and we're down a few students, I think it was six, um, but again, pretty, pretty steady, so, uh, enrollment's looking, looking better than it did as we kind of talked through that last year, but, um, yeah, eighteen ninety-seven, holding steady. And then, um, student quarterly report on drug testing, uh, so we did have some issues getting those numbers, so we will bring those numbers to you in the December meeting. I do apologize for that. And very good to ask who that maintenance position was that was open, and so thankfully Jill and several other people are watching online, and so, uh, Jill, Jill, yeah, wanted us to know it was Brandon Carpenter.
Oh.
Real-time results.
Absolutely, yes, real-time results, exactly. Thanks, Jill.
Yes, absolutely. All right, so we have, um, many of our administrator reports, again, um, I'm gonna, there was lots of good stuff about parent conferences and all kinds of, um, things with all of our sport, uh, activities groups and successes there. Anybody want to shout out anything real quick, given that we have not only closed session, but a work session after this? APR, yeah.
Next one. Next one.
Yeah, next one, that, yeah.
APR is a huge success. So definitely, definitely worth a shout out.
Yeah, absolutely.
And now I'm trying to think of which report it falls under, probably not facilities, but, um, it's probably transportation, I want to make sure that we've got, because there's drawings in there and bus in bow and all that kind of stuff that he, um, yeah, that Kyle put on there, and so want to make sure that's on the radar, um, that everybody saw that, so.
It's been, he's had it in there for.
I know, but I'm just saying, right, it's a continued thing that he keeps articulating, and so I just want to make sure that everybody has, has seen that, so, okay.
How are we, or how are applications and applications are slow coming in, um, we have, you know, not only do we have that on our website, we've got it out on social media, we also, um, in the Boone County Journal, we also put it in a newspaper in Columbia, newspaper in Jefferson City. We're doing, spreading the words as much as we can, yes.
Um, do we have a post that we can share, social media-wise?
I can do a designated post for it, I think, for one, I included several positions, but I can do a a transportation directorial position, because that seems to have a lot of success.
Yeah, so if we as a group or anybody in the room could share that?
I will share.
How soon are you, I can't talk, how soon are you interviewing?
So we will probably interview that first week in December is our goal, yes.
Sounds good.
And right now Kyle's planning on staying on that position till the end of the month, so, of December, so that's two, two weeks away.
Yeah. Absolutely, like, again, real-time results, right?
That's on the list of this week to visit with Jake and Jill about, yes, and sign those up.
Okay, all right, moving forward, finance committee?
So no updates since our last, uh, month's meeting, but we do have a meeting tomorrow, so.
Policy.
Um, yeah, so, uh, we had our meeting last Thursday, we're slowly going through our policies, all of those reviewed policies, those ones that were pulled, I'm starting to pull ones that either have not been reviewed for quite a few years or since they've been adopted, they have not been reviewed since then. And so that's why you're seeing a whole bunch come through, just to kind of refresh everybody's minds of what policies we have out there and what it states, and make sure that we're practicing what we, we've got put down.
All right, under new business, uh, prove the board member filing date.
Okay, would you like to take that one?
In just one second, sorry. Okay, uh, board member filing date, we have three positions open, um, and off the top of my head, it is me, Ms. Bagman.
Yeah.
And so those will each be three-year, um, terms. Filing will open at eight A M. on December ninth, and it will close on Tuesday, December thirtieth at five P M. Um, in between there, it will follow the open hours of the office, including those, um, winter holiday hours that were open. So we, when we do file, uh, we actually put down the date and time that the person hands the papers in, and that becomes the order that names go on the ballot. Um, so we'll work together as a team at central office to create our, our packets and make sure that we have everything ready to roll for that opening date. And I will be hitting up Mr. Matt to send out some notices, um, on social media, as well as getting stuff put in to the paper, um, two weeks before filing.
I know for the last couple of years, we have tried to do a
So you want to be a board member?
Yeah. Do we want to try to do that again?
I mean, it worked.
I think it's a good exercise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And do we want MSBA to present on that again, or do you guys just want to have a forum of, I think we've done it both ways now.
I think it was good to have Phyllis here, I thought.
Uh, was it, was it? Thoughts?
Yeah, it works, I agree.
So what I'll do is I'll reach out to them, I'll see who's available, like, days, if they can give us several, and then we'll get in touch with you guys and see what will work, so we can have some people to answer questions from our specific board aspect as well.
Make a motion to approve board filing dates as presented, starting at Tuesday, December the ninth, twenty-five, at eight o'clock, and ending on Tuesday, December thirtieth, twenty-five, at five P M.
Have a motion and a second to approve board member filing dates as presented with filing beginning Tuesday, the ninth, uh, December ninth, twenty-five, at eight A M. and ending Tuesday, December thirtieth, twenty-five, at five P M. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right? MSBA maintenance agreement.
And so the maintenance agreement that you have attached is simply from MSBA, it's our annual agreement that how they take care of our policies and work with us to make sure that we have policies that are approved and match state guidelines and legislation initiatives. Make a motion to approve the MSBA maintenance agreement as presented.
Motion and a second to approve the MSBA maintenance agreement as presented, any further discussion?
Chair, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstained? Any? What we're doing against? Yeah, boy, that went through. Okay, I think we're good there. All right, how about our I, iPad surplus sale?
So this is the annual event where we, uh, surplus iPads that no longer, uh, support the software that is run by the district, and so, uh, you know, I think initially, there's a smaller number that I had shared with Amy, but it looks like there's about forty-eight iPads, uh, with different models, eighteen iPads, uh, then one, one iPad of a certain model, two iPads, so, um, those will go on surplus after uh, the board votes tonight, uh, at a surplus of fifty dollars sold, as is. What are we using iPads for anymore? I thought we transitioned all the kindergarten, first grade, use a lot of iPads, uh, oh, all there, one-to-one in kindergarten, first grade, and then different departments use iPads for different things. Like the music department, theater department, sounds like that.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-five iPad surplus sale as presented.
Right, we have a motion and a second to approve the twenty-twenty-five iPad surplus sale as presented, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Belter Scholarship.
Can you get time?
All right, so this is our annual scholarship, um, nominee that goes, what, uh, MSBA has broken up into seventeen regions across the state, and they accept a nominee from each school district each year, um, that goes into the pool for their region, where they then select one person from each region to receive, um, scholarship, and so we had four different applications, um, this year. And so I sent out that information with all the, the personal, personally identifiable, redacted, um, and so what we need to do tonight is select a nominee, now that nominee will then be, that name will be given to MSBA, and then it will go into the pool for our region to be selected.
So we do that regularly, especially because there's no name attached?
Yeah. I, I ranked mine, right, so I don't know if we just want to, I can throw one out?
Yeah, throw it out.
I make a nomination for applicant B.
I really like D.
I was D.
I was D.
A was my number two.
I really like D's story.
I guess my piece that I will throw out there, when we went to
MSBA.
MSBA and the gentleman, was it just last?
Last summer.
Yeah, last summer. The caliber of that entry versus, and I know we've tried to work towards that, right, with giving the counselors additional information. I don't know, the substance of the caliber I thought of, of D was worthy of that level.
I thought the same of A. Me too.
I did A was one of the two.
But honestly, D is great, too, I mean.
I don't know, I've, I've got something for people who don't take the time to at least fill out every question on the survey. That's part of my thing. If somebody's not going to take the time to actually fill out all of the questions, I don't think they took it very seriously. It's just my personal opinion.
So I have to log back in and open up each one to see, I guess D didn't.
It was, it was one of the bottom two that, that didn't, and, and it wasn't like, you know, any of them were bad by any means, right, but, but I just, that's one of my personal pet peeves.
I think we can all say C is definitely not going to be the one, since none of us have said C, is that correct?
There you go.
So there we.
Narrowed it down.
So, no C.
I can't say you guys have not done your diligence. And read them and.
Last year, we were all like, oh, well, it was very easy last year, this year.
I agree.
So now what do you want us to do?
So now I'm gonna open A back up and reread it.
Yeah, me too.
I just know I have to submit a name.
Or a number, we don't have a name.
Somebody make motion. About the way I want to vote. Are we saying it between the, the two of those, A and D?
Yeah.
Between what? A and D. A and D?
Yeah.
I had B first, but, but again, I, I, A is in the top two, so I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve applicant A for the whatever it's called.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. I'm sorry, I'm trying to say A. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Me.
I did too.
Good, B is, or whichever one we did.
A.
I've got B on my screen highlighted, so I made it, okay, yeah.
They changed the format a little bit last year, when they, all these were nominated to schools. The region votes, but the region only votes on so many, and it may not be our people that are in our region, so they can be from all over the state.
Really?
Yeah.
It might not be, you're saying it might not be the people in the region that vote?
Yeah, Region Six, last time voted on all the nominees from Region Six only.
Okay.
And now we'll take maybe ten, eight or ten, uh, nominations or, yes, applicants, and we'll vote on them, and they may not be from.
But it's just a random ten.
They spread them out with all of the state.
What's the, what's the reason they don't like that?
Just a more cross-section.
Gotcha. Interesting. Okay, we already did our site planning.
We did.
Um, coordinator services contract.
Yep, so we do have a agreement to, for, to contract for five oh four coordinator services, um, to include five oh four referral processing, eligibility determinations, five oh four plan development, uh, also to include meetings with five oh four teams, completion of required paperwork, uh, we do have a, uh, five oh four coordinator, um, in our district, Karen Hindon is her name, she's new in the role this year. Um, uh, what we're finding out is that she could use some support to make sure that, uh, our five oh fours are being implemented appropriately and meetings are taking place on time, and that all of the testing assessment that goes along with that is getting done on a timely basis. Uh, we do have, our district does support a lot of five oh fours, uh, across the district, and we have several that are in process, uh, as well. So, again, just to support, uh, our five oh four program and coordination, um, as needed.
I think I remember in Brina's report, it went from sixty-three maybe last year to, I think it went up to seventy-five this year.
There are several, yes.
Remember the numbers, right?
Yes.
Um, do we have dollars for this from a budgetary perspective?
This is just one of those things that, uh, is not necessarily been budgeted for, um, but based on student need. And so there are probably, you know, there could be a budget amendment coming at some point in time.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six, five oh four coordinator, coordinator service contract with Susan Dudley as presented.
Motion and a second to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six, five oh four coordinator services contract with Susan Dudley as presented, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, so we are down to our C sub review.
And that's actually a proposed item for next year.
Okay, sorry.
We are working so fast, too, tonight's, tonight's, I need to catch up on you.
Yes, it did. Okay, all right, so, post agenda, we'll go to that, that's our C sub review, how about that? Um, approving the audit, approve the twenty-five annual secretary board report, uh, in. uh, annual performance report, staff performance report, review the superintendent goals, then we want to add the drug test results. Um, yes, if we didn't get to this, go around. Anything else that somebody could think of currently? Okay.
Move, we move into executive session, subject for section one oh two one, subsection one, three, five, six, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Second, have a motion and a second to.
We don't have anything about voting on the four-day school week in here for the agenda? The proposed agenda.
Yeah, that's a carry-forward, but, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I guess the updates, the carry-forward, yes, we need to add the yes.
Yeah. Unless we're planning on skipping that event, right?
I would say something, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, all right, so we have a motion to move into executive session. Yes. I'm pointing. It works.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Yes, for me, too. I think I said anything, I just pointed to myself. All right, we appreciate it, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, good to see you.